And I'm now gonna let David Tabancon is the only person in the waiting room and he's here on behalf of 10 Converse, which is our first agenda item for the continuation of 10 Converse place. So I'm gonna let him in as well. Diab, are you there? Is your mic working? Nope, we cannot, we cannot hear you. Still nothing. Eching or Sally, can you, or Kurt or Cheryl, can you say anything just to make sure everything is okay?
Hello?
Yeah.
I can hear and speak.
Okay. Diab has his hand up, but.
Oh, he does.
It could be your, it could be your headphones, Diab.
Yeah. Don't know what to do there.
I have a good pirate joke for Sally if we're trying to kill some time while.
Oh, please, please.
One of my kids' favorite. So what's a, what's a pirate's favorite letter?
Arr.
Arr.
You often think.
But I still don't know my name.
You often think it's R, but then pirates like the C.
Hi.
Very good.
Good one.
Well, it's obvious that Kurt and Eching are immersed in a youthful universe.
Yeah.
Brian, you are too. You should have come up with one.
Uh, I guess I'm focused on other things.
Oh, the other Brian has a young one too, don't you?
He's got the public out there waiting for a sound.
Yeah. Well, so it looks like obviously we lost Diab and here he comes again. So let's, we'll try this one more time, hopefully with different headphones. However, if there actually are any pirate jokes, I guess now would be the only time that we would entertain such things. Diab? Nothing. We cannot hear you. No, we cannot hear you. We can hear everybody else though, but not you.
Okay, how about now?
Oh, yeah.
We can definitely hear you then.
Okay, I have no idea what happened.
Uh, likewise.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try putting my headphones back on to keep the background noise a little low for you folks.
All right.
Okay, how's that?
Now you're very quiet. So turn on, turn up your input.
Yeah, I know. My input's almost at max.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So can your microphone be closer to your mouth?
I think you're good.
Okay, how am I now?
Perfect.
Okay, sorry about that.
Uh, that's okay. Uh, so again, David Tabancon is here for 10 Converse Place, uh, representing the applicant 10 Converse Place. Um, if there are any questions for the applicant, otherwise the, the conversation is ours.
Okay, excellent. Um, so apologize for that. Why don't I welcome everyone to the October 5th, 2021 Winchester Planning Board Meeting? We have, uh, with us a full house, I believe. And let me, let me look at all the people here so I can call them out. Um, so I'm going to do a roll call vote or, uh, so everyone is present and, um, we will start with Pirate Dale. Are you present, Sally?
Pirate Dale is present.
Aye. You're supposed to say aye.
Aye. Okay, so Wolf.
Aye.
Kurt's pretty.
Hi.
Okay, we're going with it. Eching Scott.
Hi.
And Lib Jeyus is. Aye, okay. Uh, we also have with us, um, our, the Winchester Town Planner, Brian Zakelli, uh, Brian Mantor from the Winchester Engineering Department and Nancy Polkari, our Recording Secretary. So what, why don't we go to the first item on our agenda? Brian, if you could pop that back up again? And so we are opening the meeting. We are continuing the public hearing on 10 Converse Place. Um, I believe I merely have to claim that we are continuing that. Um, and tonight we are talking about uh, 53G Design Consultants. At our last meeting, we agreed upon the, um, traffic and stormwater consultants uh, tool and VHB. So, um, at our last meeting, uh, the board decided they were interested in looking at a different consultant than our previous consultant, Dennis Carlon. Um, and so, and several months ago, uh, we had started looking at other consultants. And we had come up with the list and Brian, do you have that list you can pop up, please?
Um, yep, you'll, uh, hold on a second. I don't have it right handed.
There were, um, I believe four consultants on the list that Sally sent out. And then, um, Eching reached out to someone at one of those places.
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense right now, um, for Eching to kind of explain what she's found by reaching out to that consultant and a little bit about, about, about that consultant.
Yeah, I just, um, well, while you're doing that, I just wanna, so the role of the design consultant is, um, and has been the case in the past, is not to go off and do their own thing. It's to follow the direction of the board. And so one of the things that was very apparent from previous work on the 10 Converse Place is that the board did not have a, um, a single direction, which makes it a little difficult for the design consultant to move forward and work with the, with the petitioner. So one of the things we're going to have to come up with is whichever design consultant we choose, they're only going to do what we tell them to do. And so if the board doesn't have a coherent picture of what they want, then the consultant will be just pushed hither and thither, which will not be very effective. So, um, why don't we, um, okay, so this is, okay. So why don't we, so we, the, the list started up with, um, essentially, um, there's UTIL. Isn't there a UTIL in there as well?
It's UTIL.
UTIL, sorry.
Um, yeah, this was just the most recent email from Sally showing the list of design consultants from the 29th.
Right, there was a, okay, because there was a PDF that got sent around as well.
Oh, and then if you, um,
Right there.
Keep going. Yeah, these are all, then this was the original list that I started with, was it, which is at the beginning of the thread.
Okay. So we have.
But UTIL is, oh, I know, here it is, yeah.
UTIL is in there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's in there.
The original list, yeah.
So, um, well, I would, I would think that to begin this discussion, we might actually want to, um, put together sort of a list of what we're looking at for in the consultant before we go to the list of consultants. So what are the, the minimum requirements? What are their, what's their focus or what is their, you know, what is their sensibilities that make them that we would want to have? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the floor.
Well, I can, I can start, but I'm very, very interested to hear what the two trained architects in the room have to say. Um, so maybe I can just wait on that comment until I, like, here, because I do have specific thoughts.
Can I, can I just ask one quick question before? And do we, can, can maybe someone just refresh my memory or, or clarify a little bit better for me? What exactly we're asking the consultant to do? I mean, Diab, I know you made the point, like, we're not asking them to evaluate, you know, the, you know, like, the the revisions to zoning and whatnot that were proposed and put in place. We're just asking them to comment, I think, on the actual design that's being poured forth in the context of the previous work that's been done as well as zoning in that area, right?
Yeah, and also, also, the, the design consultant works with the, um, the petitioner to improve their design. So for instance, if the board says, "We really hate that", then the design consultant is, is able to offline work with them, knowing which direction we want to go, and bring some ideas or put some pushback against what their designer has done. So it's, it's, um, very much they, they are, they're working directly with the, with the petitioner to improve the design so that it, it meets our requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Diab, I'd just like to add, um, though you've had many more years of experience with, with the planning board, but on my recent experience, um, Dennis Carlon did, did attend the public meetings and listen to the public as well as the planning board.
Yeah, but he's, he's, you know, you're right, he does, but they, he's, he's paid by us. So whatever the public says, we have to tell him whether we agree with it and that's the direction we want to go. So that's a very good point. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I noticed that Dennis, having had public experience or experience in a, a, a setting of, town planning or public, um, uh, speaking on behalf of, uh, you know, a town, he was able to, uh, present and formulate ideas that could that, um, were, were understood by not only the planning board, but also by everyone who might be listening or participating in those public meetings.
So that, that brings up, I think, uh, our first requirement is they have to be able to, um, interact well with the public and accept their criticisms and to describe and to, uh, convey what it is that, what, what the design sensibilities are to the public.
I think they also need to have, um, the, the time necessary to attend all the meetings.
Yes.
Uh, I was sorry, I'll, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was gonna say that, that is one actual extremely important thing that we're, you know, have to at least take into consideration. And that's probably why we have an hour here, because not only do we need to kind of discuss who or what direction, we also kind of do need to discuss a scope, which is very important. Um, very important for tonight. And I'm hoping that's actually the action item that we will at least get to a place. We're not nitpicking words. We're talking bigger picture stuff that, um, you know, we will be able to work on as we go. So, sorry for the interruption, Diab.
To that point, Brian, can, may I ask a question, Diab?
Yeah.
Um, do you, I, I don't know, because of lack of experience, can, can we ask you how many meetings the, um, the hardware store site might have involved? Um, just to kind of get an idea of what we might think that scope is, I guess? Because I think this is of a similar kind of, you know, it's, it's, um, the business district, you know, master plan, it's, it's maybe even a more difficult site, but.
I have a better number than, uh, hours, which is a general price, which is somewhere probably in the fourteen to twenty thousand dollar range.
And someone disagrees with that number.
Yeah, yeah, get that, yeah, I get that all the time.
Um, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, so in, in terms of number of meetings that they attended, I mean, we, we had many meetings with six fifty-four. I don't, I want to say ten, uh, including pre-application and, 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 uh, you know, all of that that they were involved in. But there was obviously other meetings on a, like, once a month scale, um, not in a public setting, uh, where we're trying to work on, you know, we're having working meetings. And really, I wouldn't use the word improve. I would say refine. So, yeah, o- only because it, that, that is the, the, the job of the, the, the design consultant here is really to, you know, if there's, in my memo, I basically tried to explain that, um, my take on it, which was that if we need new blood, we knew, we need new blood and I can, I can understand the need for that. But if the reason was to try to mold the consultant into making a smaller scale building, for example, all I'm trying to say, and I might be, I, I, I know that everyone will not agree with this, but the zoning in that area, a plain unit development in that location, calls for a scale of this, of this size, in my opinion. So if the idea is to try to get a different design consultant to not implement the zoning, I'm saying that there could, you could end up getting the same kind of result. That's, that was, that was my point in, uh, that I, that I was trying to make in the memo and I just wanted to kind of touch on that a little bit. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll stop there.
Yeah, if I, I'd never jump in just a bit, because I think, Brian, you're making a number of really good points. So one of the things that we've had in the past is you, you, you have the architect for the project who has their view and their design vision. And, um, they're presenting that vision and they want to be true to that vision. And so it's, it's, there are, um, it's really hard for us to have a consultant come in and say, um, "We totally dislike your vision. Um, our consultant's gonna redesign it", because that's really not what they're there for, because, um, they're there to, um, to tweak around the edges, as Brian said, to refine it, because it's still their project. It's their architect who has that vision. And, um, if this, if the board feels that it should be a smaller project, then that is not up to our design consultant. Um, the design consultant will not give us that advice to say, "This should be a smaller project", but the design consultant will say, um, "I don't think that the top of the building is, is well done as it might have been. Can you do some other feature?", right? I mean, that's the level of tweaking. So any large, yeah, Brian, I, am I going off here?
Well, no, I, I'm, I just want to kind of make a, a, a further point that the, um, usually the directive in all of these cases that we've been involved with the design consultants, it's, it's essentially, we, the instruction to the design consultant is implement those design guidelines. That, that is, so that is, that is the point. And, and depending upon who you hire, frankly enough, they may interpret them in different ways, or, I mean, you can obviously get different results. But the directive, the scope, is going to be centered around kind of implementing those design guidelines specifically for this site, the Mill Pond site. Because there are design guidelines for that Mill Pond site. And that's, this is a way that the planning board protects itself in general, that you have a third party outside person saying that this is how I, I feel that the design guidelines are met or not met. So, um, sorry, I wanted to, so it wasn't, um, the reason why I said it is that, yes, it was just refinement, but it's not kind of localized around very specific, um, like, small details. They can be larger, um, not full programming. I just want to make it, make it clear that there's more to the design guidelines than just, you know, roof refinement.
Uh, yeah. I chose a really poor example.
My understanding of this role, if I can, um, put in my present, is that, um, this person is working for the planning board and understanding what has been written in law or what has been determined in town meeting, um, whether it's the maximum FAR or, um, what the design guidelines are for the CBD or the PBD, and to interpret those and to, um, be a peer review, um, for the designer, um, and the design itself, and to have an understanding of regulatory as well as urban planning, um, understanding, uh, is it the street contextual design? And have the, actually be skilled. So like, if the public wants a smaller building, she can't or he can't, like, say, well, just make a smaller building, but they might have the skillset to use the tools in, of architecture and design to make it seem more, you know, human-like at certain vantage points, or, you know, be able to be a sounding board for the architect and, and figure out ways that he or she might not see, um, and, you know, be skilled peer, um, to, to help implement those things, right? But they cannot change the laws, uh, or to make it a smaller FAR, or, you know, or those kinds of things, but they should have the skillsets to be able to use what is within the realm of design to, uh, you know, execute what maybe the town wants, just smaller. How do you do that, maybe, with an FAR three point zero? Um, on the ground, on the facade, the roof line?
I'd just like to build on, on what you're saying, Eching, and that is that, you know, is that I think Brian did a very nice job of, um, creating an evaluation of the, the what the, what the petition was or the application was, and where it was, where it meets our laws and it doesn't meet our laws. I think, I think the real key here is being able to work with the architect on all of the things that you're talking about, based on the feedback from the planning board. So, um, I, I do think, think they may need to ask questions or understand the laws, but I, I, I think that's, in a way, that's our job. It's kind of, I wonder if, you know, there's yeah, there, I, I, I wonder if there's room for interpretation of those laws in, within the, um, this consultant's, you know, responsibilities.
Well, I think there's, there's certainly, um, room within the regulations and the, uh, the guidelines for interpretation. I mean, there isn't, uh, it's not a hard and fast, you must do this. So, um, again, I think the, it's a question of, um, what direction the board gives, so that, for instance, we may decide that we really view the regs one particular way. And so the, the, this, our design consultant will bring that to the table, or if we say, we, we're, we don't really care so much about this particular provision, that would give them some flexibility in approaching it. So I think that, um, what'll be key is, I think, for the consultant to look at the building and maybe indicate some of the areas where there might be conflict, some of the areas where it's sort of a gray area in terms of whether they do or don't, just to highlight to us where they think it might need work. And then they would come to us and then we would say, "Yeah, this is obviously a problem" or "We don't really care about this", the solution, whatever solution you come up with is appropriate. So, Sally?
With regards to the scope, it's specifically that we have charged, we would charge this consultant with, as Eching pointed out, understanding the zoning bylaws, understanding the design regulations, the special regulations governing section seven point three of our zoning bylaw, the central business district, and understand both of those things in great detail. And then using their professional skill and experience, both in architecture and urban planning, because this is an exercise in both, um, um, to evaluate the current design specifically against the regulations that are conduct, contained in that regulations document. Those actually aren't guidelines. They're requirements. They're not guidelines. Um, to use the word guidelines is to belie the fact that they are legally regulations that are required to be adhered to, unless the planning board were to vote to overrule them. Um, and there are places where it says in the guidelines, excuse me, in the regulations, "The planning board may do this and the planning board may do that, and we indeed may", um, but the fact is that the regulations call for certain design standards and they also call for, and this is in the zoning bylaw, they call for certain things to be done by the developer in exchange for which they shall be given, or that we may, excuse me, we may grant them, um, flexibility in the constraints of as of right. So as to whether the consultant should work well with the applicant and whether it's intended that the consultant work offline with the ac- ac- applicant, um, to both of those questions, I would say, probably. In fact, sounds like a really good idea. Um, but the fact is that the fifty-three G design consultant represents the planning board and represents the zoning bylaws and the design regulations that are the, the separate document promulgated by this board. And so their scope is to, point by point, go through each of the design requirements of both of those documents and identify where they succeed, where they hit the nail on the head, it's perfect, and where there's work to be done. And then to help guy, help us guide the process to achieve the outcome that is envisioned in the regulations. I don't think it's their job to redesign from the ground up. I think it's their job to work with us, with the regs and with the zoning law, to come up with a building that is the optimal building for the site, given the applicant's commitment to the current direction that they're going.
Quick thing, Diab. Uh, thanks. I, um, so I think that I have enough to go on in terms of a scope, um, based upon, unless there's more feedback that anyone would like to give, I think that there's been a lot for me, for me to write to, to, uh, for, to give back to you for some type of approval. I think, uh, and so, did anybody have any more questions about scope? Because I think we actually did, did do, um, I think I have enough. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Great. Uh, that makes, that makes things easier. So now the harder part, I think, which is kind of like, where do we go from here in terms of uh, design consultants that we're going to be pursuing, uh, or not? So, um,
I'm sorry, can you bring the scope up one more time, Brian? I apologize because.
If these were just, those were just notes, I can certainly put it up, but those were just, those were just notes. It's not, I mean, like I said, you know, these were just bulleted.
You were capturing, it's like whiteboard, and I really appreciate that you do that, because it makes it real. Um, so it's working successfully, the architects to come to an agreeable solution with the neighbors and other stakeholders, um, and a detailed analysis of the design standards and how they relate or don't relate to the proposal. Um, and it's also, um, so coming to an agreeable solution, I guess, is the crux of the matter. Um, that, like, say they, I don't know, say they say, "I think all the window sills should be orange", right? And that, that there would be a whole process that would lead to that being a consensus outcome, using a ridiculous example. But they're part of a process, right, Brian? Does the law say what the law has to say about it?
What do you mean? I, I, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Fifty-three G has specific language about their scope, um, or is it pretty much?
No, 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 we, we have to come up with, I, I, I mean, if, if you want to go all the way there, it's in terms of anything legal, you know, we have to come up with a reasonable scope. We can't say that they can do something crazy, right?
Yeah, like.
That's it. That, yeah, like, there's, you know, but that, so no, is the short, is the short. No, there's.
Okay, alright.
And I actually, I, I want to, um, be a little bit of a stick in the mud. Um, working successfully to the architects to come to an agreeable solution with the planning board. It is the planning board which en- It is the planning board which incorporates the ideas of the neighbors and the stakeholders. We are the ones who give the direction. So if it's, it's not the architects. Or they, sorry, the design consultant's job to consult with neighbors. It's our job to take into their input and give the design consultant their direction. Because otherwise, they have too many people. They need to have a very clear direction and it has to come from us. So I would, I would. Suggest that we change that work successfully to put in with the planning board who will. Take into consideration. The concerns of neighbors and other stakeholders.
Yeah, I agree with that, D M. I don't think that, that, um, I think that's our job is to represent both. The regulations and the zoning bylaw and the best interest of the community taking into account their input.
Yeah, and I think it was, it's important that we also do it this way to protect the consultant. In the sense that the consultant should not be getting, you know, fifty emails a day from. Other people than us, because A, that's annoying, B, it's confusing. Because they really should be only taking their direction from us. So, so now that we have this. Scope, as Brian said, now comes the actual, the hard part, is how do we figure out? Who, what's our shortlist or a long list? How do we move forward?
So, uh, I think that we touched on that a lot. We said that we wanted people that had previous experience in. In um, architecture and urban planning, um, specifically with regards to mixed use development. And then we look at each of their um, body of work. And see what resonates with us, keeping in mind. The, the design regulations, the input from the community and that we have so far. Um, and um, the context, the context of Winchester Center downtown.
Okay, so um, do we just start at the top of the list and work our way down? I don't know anything about these people, so.
Necessary, D M. I think um. Well, that, that list was generated and then I, um, I don't know if anybody else did, but I, I try to reach out. Um, to some of my colleagues and the, even, even the dean of my design school and um. So, some people who are working in that space, and you know, the, the, the names came up, um, but you know, not everybody's available or interested or. You know, like, um, have, have the stamina to do this. So, uh, it, it got to be a shortlist really fast. Um, so. I don't know if it's his time to introduce the, the one person that I got to be interested, um. But I found it to be pretty hard to have, to have a, like I, to, to hone in really quickly, because I. That we have, we're so short on time, um, and, you know. Not a lot of networking, I mean, uh, we, we need a lot of networking or understanding of who's, who's out there. And then. It's too much.
So, are you saying we just have one person that we can?
I brought, I don't know if anybody else were, were able to, you know, seek anybody out.
So I, I know Marissa. Um, she's great, and I know you Teal did the master plan for Cambridge, city of Cambridge, and they. They rocked it. They just are incredible. Um, but I know Marissa's personality and I think she's young and. Um, smart and talented and she wants to do it. Wow. I, I, thank you, I think, for, for doing that.
Well, um, so I think that. I would like to know the people who were contacted and said that they didn't have time. So that we can make sure that, um, we know. I'm uncomfortable go, I, I, it's, I don't.
You should, we should interview her, D M. I, I don't think.
Well, I don't say we shouldn't interview her, but for transparency, we should have a list of all of the people we actually reached out to. And who were unable to. Um, to, 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 you know, who said they were unable to do it. Because the public will want to know why it is we chose one consultant over another. And if we just say, well, this is the only consultant who returned our calls, we at least they need, they need to know. Who we actually attempted to reach out to.
Okay. I found Marissa. I think her, her name rhymes with Vanessa, Marissa. Um, and so I reached out to Mimi Love, uh, she, she's a principal at U Teal. U Teal is a firm that really uh, kind of relishes in the regulatory, um, you know. Expression, so like they, 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 um. I don't want to say fetishize, but they almost like really like love the nerdiness of zoning and, um, you know, laws and how it impacts. You know, the shaping of a town or a city or a bu- building. Um, and I actually to, to, um, full disclosure, I worked there. Um, but in like two thousand seven or eight, um, around then, uh, for a short time, so it's been a long time. And so I knew, um, what they. They do, um, and it, it is, um, writing zoning laws for, is Cambridge, they did it for Somerville, and it's beautiful. I mean, I think that. There, what they do is, you know, they take, they try to take really dry subjects like zoning and make it into like a. Graphically elegant way to communicate to, you know, as many people as possible. And so I, I think they do a great job with that, but they also do the other side, which is. Um, design the buildings that suit, um, the, the codes. And, and figure out ways to do that elegantly as well and to make it, make it a good product or make it a good building. Um, and I was on the architecture side more and I worked with Mimi and she's, she's an excellent designer, um, and she understands like the, that. Uh, that, uh, purpose of the firm. Um, so I reached out to her, um, and because I know she's done sort of peer reviews for other projects before, um, but she turned it down because she is. Close friends with David Hessein and they serve on the design board committee for Boston together. And so she was like, no, I can't do it. Um, but here's, she's a great person from U, U Teal, and I think she'd be great for it. And if that was, that was, um, Marissa. Um, so I, I talked with her a little bit. I think she, um, is interested. Uh, she, uh, she's, she wants to know what the scope is. Uh, time and meetings and, you know, who to, who to report to and things like that. And she's interested in interviewing, um. And, and understanding what the, the job is. Um, I also reached out to the, um, Sasaki. Um, Sasaki, uh, partner Mary Ann, and, you know, I, I just know her just socially, but not, you know, but I, she, she never, she never called back. Um, and that, that was sort of all my, the, the time that I, I had in.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so unfortunately, um, my audio is really garbled, so I cannot write down the names that you gave. But if you could s- s- just send those out as a note to Brian. So those are two firms, U Teal and Sasaki.
They're a really big firm that they do a lot of urban design and architecture.
So, um. The other, so those are two, I mean, I have no problem calling in this person to interview her. Um, I just, uh, you know, one of the other firms that were listed in the suggestions. Um, there was, um, I actually went and I looked at their. Put some of the portfolios that I saw online. Uh, unfortunately, I seem to have destroyed all of my windows. Uh, there was a firm which was doing an urban planning for Union Square in Somerville.
That's U Teal.
That's U Teal? Okay, I, I have to admit that what I saw there, I lived in Somerville a number of years ago. Um, they have a version of Somerville's Union Square that I do not have, so, um, that was an interesting design. Um, so the other designs were, and I, I apologize, I don't, I had their websites up here. Um, there were.
May I, may I, may I make a comment, D M?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I did look at the website of every one of the firms that Brian had in his memo and that was in the memo that. E Ching and I produced, um, earlier this year in April. Um, and I made a judgment for myself based on their description of themselves and the look of their portfolios. That there was one firm in particular that I would be very interested in having come in and interview as quickly as possible. And that is Imai Keller, um, whose work to me seemed to speak very much to an understanding. Of the village scale of Winchester, and I would strongly recommend that they come in. Now, I'm curious, E Ching, is that one of the firms that said they don't have time?
I've never contacted them, no.
Okay, so I would, I would recommend that Imai Keller Moore Architects in Watertown.
Yeah.
Um, added to the short, shortlist.
Okay.
I would also add, though, that, like, uh, individual designers might not have the same aesthetics at the portfolio, um, that they represent. And you, we would be hiring, I think, the individual rather than, um, the, the, uh, firm. So I, I think that. What's key here would be just a skilled designer who could understand, um, all, all that's required and be able to. Um, use those skills to execute something, you know, and, and refine it and make, make the project better.
So I'm gonna, so I'm. One of the people I think has to be on this list is Dennis Carlow. Dennis is a skilled designer. I, I'm trying to understand what's new that we're looking for. In terms of, if we're not going to go for the portfolio, because as you point out, it reflects the entire firm, and if the firm is large. Then it's not going to give us a view of what an individual designer does. So if we're, so if the skills we need of a designer. What is special about one over the other, which would, other than just our interviews, but. You know, I would say that Dennis has proven himself to be a skilled designer. He's certainly undertaken large projects and small projects. So. I don't understand how we then. We're obviously looking more than, for more than just a skilled designer, right? There's got to be some sort of a. Philosophical view towards urban design, otherwise we could just randomly choose a skilled. Architect or urban designer and be happy, right?
I, I would agree with you, D M, and I think that, um, I think that we have also a design review committee. We have. Um, we have, um, a lot of input, um, on the design side. I think that. Dennis brings, uh, the experience of having worked with the city of Cambridge. Um, I think U Teal also has that capacity, Somerville and Cambridge. So I think we need to. Um, there, there needs to be a dialogue about urban design that, that is something that. Um, our town is, you know. We, uh, we value, um, and. Um, hold up the context that we live in to such an incredible. Height that, that we, you know, we need outside eyes and, and understanding of, of planning. Um, to bring new ideas to, to help, you know, shape. You know, the opinions of the planning board and the town in, in solving these problems. It's just. It's, it's solving for what the town and what we want, um, with, um, with a developer. You know, and, and their architect, right? So it's, it's going to take some creative. And some real town or, yeah, some polit- some understanding of how. Towns deal with these kinds of things. It's a big, this, this project in particular is pretty, pretty powerful for the town.
So, um, why don't we, so I, I, we have, um, three names now listed. Um, we have an, a firm, Imai Keller, we have Dennis Carlow. Um, we have, um, the person from U Teal who's, because of my horrible. Audio, I cannot get their name, and I apparently have lost Zoom.
Marissa. Marissa Perro.
Okay. I seem to have lost my Zoom connection.
We see you.
We hear you.
I know, but I can't find the Zoom window, so I can't see any of you. And I, okay, well, this is, this is just fun and games here. Okay, so Brian, I. All I know is you started screen sharing. I got the little bubble and that was it. So I don't know what happened.
Well, so right now, there's four, there are four on the list, um, but it, uh, so the idea would be. To try to interview all four of these.
No, nobody, the person I contacted from Sasaki didn't respond at all, so.
Okay.
Right, I, I think Sasaki is not on the list.
Sorry, I thought, thought about that.
I would like to remind the planning board that we voted in our last meeting that we would find new blood. And that does not mean that Dennis Carlow would be one of the people that we would interview. He's had an opportunity to make a wonderful impact on this town by providing the design guidelines. That this new building will be held to the standards of, and I think that he's very close to the design that we're evaluating now. Um, in fact, I think he's, it's probably, it, it, you know, he's just intricately involved in the design of the building that we have now. And I do know from my own perspective and from the perspective of public input that we've heard so far. That the design needs modification. Let's call it tweaking, if that's the word you like. And I don't think that. Such tweaking can be accomplished with somebody who's already deeply embedded in the design as it stands now. I think it's really important that we remember. The vote of the last planning board meeting, that we introduce new blood, which is what Cheryl Wolf was just describing the importance of.
Well, I want to point out that the design that's before us now is actually a quite different design than the one. That Dennis worked on. So while it does have four stories plus a setback or however many stories, I can't remember right now. It is a very different design in terms of its look, in terms of the cladding and the upper story. So. I, I don't know that I would say that Dennis is intimately, um, attached to that design. And I do want to point out. That Dennis worked at the behest of the planning board. If you don't like what the design looked like, then you got to blame the planning board, not Dennis. Again, Dennis, I mean, I, I, I think that's very important to distinguish between the actions of the designer as. They were directed by the planning board and what the planning board's decisions were. So, um. I just found my Zoom window, yeah. Um, so. There certainly, I, I was not one of the people who voted to, to. Go in with another designer. Um, the rest of the board can determine whether they want to revisit that vote or not. They, the, I, I don't recall what the actual wording of the vote was. Um.
It was to look, the vote, it was to look for new peo- it was to look for new people, essentially, you know, essentially look for possible new candidates.
Okay.
I mean, it was, it was to reach out. I mean, I don't, I don't think it has to be that difficult of exactly what the vote was. It was to reach out to new, to new people to see if that's. Possibly a better option.
And I want to say I'm extremely grateful to E Ching for doing that outreach, because at the end of the last meeting, it was not clear that that was an opportunity or an instruction. That the planning board left the meeting with. So I applaud E Ching's work in doing so. I was unclear whether it was appropriate in advance for this meeting for us to reach out and investigate people's interest and availability. I'm really glad that. E Ching did that, and I would be very interested in, in, um, knowing that that is now our job before the next meeting. To, um, or just let's get the people in that we've made a shortlist of and interview them. Um.
Well, so the board did not give direction to anyone, so that is the problem. The board did not give direction, so that was our fault. Um, I would be, I would be comfortable, um. If this were something that Brian would do, because I think that's an appropriate thing that. The time planner should be doing in terms of reaching out. I'm a stickler for having things go through official channels when it comes to public perception. And so, um, that's just me.
Well, I think the next step, Brian, is to send out our list or to contact people with the scope, right? And put, put that out. So maybe then we'll just, we'll hear how many people are interested. Is that right?
Yeah, I think the only further, so I'm, I'm gonna work on finalizing a scope. Um, that we can review at our neck, for our next meeting on the, 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 the twelfth, and it might not get into our packet. But hopefully it will. If not, it could be, um, under updates, or sorry, we can put it in the, on the agenda, but you might not have the, it in time.
Well, I think having the scope, if we get it ahead of time, that's great. If we have it up on the screen in the next meeting, that's fine. But I think the purpose of this meeting is to come up with a shortlist of people that we would like you to reach out to and invite to an interview. And that those interviews would happen very quickly, um, and like within the next, I don't know. And like within the next, I don't know, two business weeks. And that we would, if not sooner, like the next week, if.
Yeah, no, certainly as soon, certainly as soon as possible. So I mean, as of right now, I, it just, so I'm clear here, because I'm just looking at the time. We have about ten minutes left on this agenda item. And then we'll. But it's, so it's Imai Keller, UTIL, and then there's this up down about Dennis Carlon, whether I'm reaching out to him or not.
Mike is on. I, I would, I would. About Dennis Carlon, like I had never met, uh, worked with him. I, I came in at the latter half of the Bell's Hardware thing and just saw some of the discussions there. And so I didn't understand what the rules were. And, you know, to be fair to him, like I didn't, I didn't look at his bio and understand where he was coming from. So I mean, I never worked with him. I, I see that he sort of has like a a longstanding history with people who especially show up to these meetings. And, but I, I don't want to make my judgment based on that. And I don't, I would love to hear like what he has and he's, he seems to have done it in a very positive way for some people here. And so I, I'd like to, I would want to invite him for an interview. Just to understand it from this new board's perspective, because I don't know.
I don't think that we have time to interview a lot of people. And I think you've you know, you've made the point that because he's been engaged before, he should be engaged again. I could make the point to the exact opposite, that because he's been engaged before and because the building that's in front of us does not meet with initial public acclaim. That it is time for a new design review peer, a, a new peer review consultant. To look at what can be taken, what can be done with the building that we have today, to tweak it, as you say. To come up with something that brings it clearly in compliance with the design regulations, which the building that we're looking at right now is clearly not in compliance with. And to have the person who wrote those regs. And who's been working with this developer, you know, hand in hand for years now. To be the peer review is, I don't know, it's like, it's, it's, it's not asking for an independent view. It's asking for an opinion from somebody who's already been intricately involved in the entire design process.
So I, I just wanna, I, I need to jut in right now. I think that I do not believe that this design is clearly at odds with our design guidelines and regulations. There is a significant number of people who did feel that this building was appropriate for downtown. I don't think it's appropriate to, well, one can have one's opinions, but generalizing to what the public does or doesn't want, I think. Is, is uncertain at best when we don't have a scientific measurement of how the public felt. So I can tell you that in all the time that I was on the board, while this project was being discussed, there were certainly opinions on all sides as to whether this was an appropriate design. And from my personal opinion is I do not feel that this building is in violation of the design guidelines. So I think that we're going to have some difficult conversations about this. I don't think that Dennis has been working with them. He has worked with them at the behest of the planning board. I, I don't think it's, it's, the, the insinuation that he is somehow closely tied to their design group, I think, because I find that very troubling, because in my, in my experience, that was not the case. If you're just, I mean, I just, I, 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 I need to push back on that a little. He was our employee. He did what we asked of him.
I, I do want to remind the board that Mr. Carlon has met independently with the applicant on more than one occasion. And that's fine, that's fine.
I, I was there, or just to be clear, I, I was there at all, at all time and, and the, the way that these meetings. The design review has to happen in between the planning board meeting. So it's not like, not only is it not, not only is it appropriate, it's necessary and standard. To be meeting, to be doing this. I want to make it very clear that there was nothing weird about that.
There is, there. There's still an insinuation being made that Dennis was not acting on the best interests of the town. And I want to push back against that strongly. Dennis often sat there and asked the planning board what the heck the planning board wanted, because it was unable to come to a decision. Dennis followed whatever design guidelines that he was provided by the town. And to say, to insinuate that he was working more closely with the developers than he was with the planning board, I think is a real disservice to Dennis. During these meetings, Brian is the one who managed Dennis as a contractor.
So. I, you know, right now is a really, is a really busy time. Just in general, for architects, I know that from my practice. That, that's not to say that it's not, you know, possible to get exactly who we want. I think I Ching was saying that, Yiching was saying that as well. I think that if we were to approach UTIL, Imai Keller, and Dennis Carlon, and maybe one other person. We, we, we would find out who has the bandwidth to take this on and would and, and we would hear how they approach this particular problem. I think we just need to, we need to talk to three or four people, if they're willing to do it, or they have the time to do it and and make a decision. And I think I think this has been an interesting conversation, but I think we, I'd like to move to selecting the firms that we want to reach out to.
The, the three, the three that, that were up, which are Imai, Imai Keller, Dennis Carlon and UTIL.
Do we have a, do we have a fourth, maybe? I think three is a little on the slim side. I think we might want to have.
Yeah, I also think it's, it's it's unlikely we'll be able to get all of them at a, at a, on a night meeting in the next two to three weeks. I mean, like, that's, that's kind of you know, stars align there. I think it's more likely it's, you know, someone reaching out to them and you know, and like being able to talk to several different people. I, I'm just talking about logistics.
Are we allowed to do that, Brian? Or do they need to come in front of all of us in a public, you know, environment? In order for this to be the right thing?
So, yeah, it, 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 it kind of. It, it does not need to be, it does not need to be that. We ju, we do need to solicit three different. You know, three different quotes, so you know, that's certainly possible. Interest or interests if we, if we wanted to.
Their statements of qualification. This is a request for qualifications process right now.
We could ask for whatever we want. We didn't do RFQs in the past, nor does, nor does ZBA or other special permit granting authorities really.
Choose who we think is the closest. And I think we can do that by interviews. And I support Cheryl's suggestion that we move quickly to identify, if you need to, one more. I looked at the websites, every name that was presented to us, and I didn't see anybody who had the experience to do what we're talking about, except for the one that I mentioned.
All right, well, I can reach out to the four. I, I'm sorry, there's a motion on the floor. I guess we should finish that out, but, but, but the short. I can re, I can reach out to a, another one that seemed to be you know, something about historical context and, 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 I mean, the number that I, that, sorry, the number of consultants that I put out all had experience in that. So I'll maybe even reach out to a few more.
Yeah, they, they had experience in historic restoration. I didn't see them having an experience of one, some of the things that Cheryl was talking about, which is understanding the integration of new structures into. And, and what I would call contextual design, although it feels like a.
Sally, that's, that's like essentially what we do as architects is, is that, like we.
Right. And I, when I looked at the other websites, I didn't see that they had done designs that were contextually consonant with this.
Maybe not in the way that you want to see them, but I think that probably the, the discipline was to look at the context and to do it in a way that's, you know, of the times.
That's helpful. That's very helpful, actually. Yes, I agree.
So, so I think to, to bring this back to scheduling, our next, our pub, next public hearing or, or, or planned hearing on this is on October twenty sixth. Do we want to try to have a consultant onboard by then?
We wouldn't be, we would have to do the interviews then. Well, well, right now, we haven't, right now, we haven't continued it to the, to the twenty sixth, although that was the schedule that we were thinking about, was that that would be the next one, because the board, other boards and committees to, to, to do that.
Right, so.
But that'll be the next time.
Right, so what I'm saying is if we want to have them available to listen to the public hearings, et cetera, that's happening on the twenty sixth. And we work backward from there, then we need to have interviews probably beginning, sometime next week or beginning of the following week. So we may have, so I don't know how, as Brian pointed out, this is a or in physics, it's called a multi-body problem. We have to get everyone aligned. So we could try to come up with another special meeting where we just interviewed. We could give each person fifteen minutes or twenty minutes. I think that should be sufficient. And then we would come to a decision. I don't know if it's possible to do that all in one night again, without reaching out to these people. I don't know that we have to wait for the, to have an official scope written up. I think that Brian has a good enough idea that he could reach out and say, generally, this is what we're looking to do. Are you interested? Can you meet with us in the next two weeks? And then we'll move from there.
I would like to make a motion. May I do so, Diab?
That Cheryl had a, Cheryl had a motion already and we never finished that.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't hear it. Cheryl, your motion, please.
I would like to make a motion that we vote on. Who we'd like to have Brian reach out to. Does that make sense?
It was the three on the list and a fourth contextual architect, you know, contextual architecture, urban design firm, the.
That's what I was hoping to say. Thank you.
Okay, and is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, so. The motion is to have. Brian, can you, can you put, I don't, I cannot get this person's name right to save my life. I think we need to have it on the screen.
It's, Imai Keller, Dennis Carlon, Mar, Marissa, I don't have a last name there, Marissa. And then a, a fourth, urban design contextual architecture firm.
That Brian will select. Okay.
May I amend the motion? It just by, 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 to the point of timing. To say with the goal achievable as it is of interviewing these consultants preferably in one night. Two, if necessary, and that such interviews be completed before the date of October twenty sixth. So that if we can have a special meeting even before the twenty sixth. So that they could attend, but if not, but certainly the whole idea is that these interviews be conducted in the next two weeks and a decision be made within that same timeframe. Brian, is that unrealistic?
Uh, no, it's just that, that's an extremely long motion.
We, we could just deal with.
Interviewed and decided on within two weeks.
Within two weeks, okay. So to be interviewed and decided upon within two weeks is the amendment to the motion. That I think we, so you made an amendment to the motion. Is there a second? To amend the motion?
Can I agree that since I made the motion?
Can do that, except for me, apparently. So now we have to vote on the amendment to the motion. And we're not gonna have an amendment to the amendment. I don't think we can do that. So roll call vote, please.
Yeah, I.
Okay, Yiching?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Um, and Cheryl, yep, and Diab says I. So the amendment, the motion now leads to reach out to Dennis Carlon, the firm of Imai Keller. Marissa, whose last name Brian has, and the, and a, another firm that Brian will come up with to have interviews within the next, and misses, within the next two weeks. Okay, so that's the motion. Let's vote on that. Okay, Cheryl Wolf?
Hi.
Sally Dale?
Hi.
Yiching Scott?
Hi.
Kurt Spring?
Hi.
Diab Jereus, I five zero. Thank you all very much. So we're not all set for consultants, but we're on our way. So now I think we are, we are a bit behind. But let's see, Brian, if you could pop our agenda up, please.
Sure, so. We have petition number three nine five zero, lot two Abbey Road Appeal.
Could you, we're, we're not seeing it.
Oh, sorry about that. There we go. So we have fifteen minutes for this. We're a little bit behind, but we did have a large, a larger chunk. Depending upon how late we want to stay up tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously. Okay, so, well. I guess I'll start with my memo and I like, Brian Manta from Engineering is also, is also with us.
Can you, before you jump into your memo, Brian, I think it'd be useful for the, the people in the viewing audience to have a little bit of background on what's before us and why the planning board is involved.
So, present moment, we are involved as an advisory authority to the zoning board of appeals. Because there is an appeal to the building permit for a house that was, that is located on a lot that went through the subdivision process for planning as well as a development agreement with the select board and a land transfer with town meeting. So if that's not complicated enough for one, one parcel, I don't, I don't know. It is that's at literally every level of the process in, in town in terms of building permit level, special permit level, variance level, subdivision level, town meeting level, select board level. So at the moment, the building permit is being appealed for a number of reasons that have been out, laid out by attorney Jeff Roloff, who's here. And there are several neighbors here as well. I can, so the petitioner seeking appeal under section nine three three from the CEO's issuance of a building permit to construct a new single family home on the property. So as I said, the single family home that was to be constructed on the site was the result of a variance process. An applicant wishes the developer to go through site plan review. Specifically so that the abutters to the Abbey Road project might receive the protection afforded to them by the zoning bylaws. And the abutters participated in the variance process where conditions were put on the permit. It's, in my opinion, was unclear what site plan review would do to change the project as the developer has already gone through a more robust review. Through the variance process already. The question of whether or not this process should have gone through site plan review for a changing grade is really for legal counsel to determine. An extensive engineering review had, did occur related to the grading of the site and the drainage work that was completed here. So if the only trigger for site plan review was grade related. Legal counsel has determined that any review process for those grade changes would not entail restrictions related to the size or design of the house. So the applicant states that the triggers, that site plan review for floor area because their basements and cellars really should be counted, if they were used, because they're being used for living purposes. But they're wrong here, because we explicitly state for the purpose of calculating floor area for site plan review. That if the lowest level has more than fifty percent of its area below grade, meaning it's a basement or cellar, that it doesn't count. So. I, I, I kind of disagreed for the need based upon the grade change or the counting of the basement as part of the gross square footage of the floor area. And those were all of my comments related to, to this petition and I recommended unfavorable action with regards to this appeal.
Okay, thank you. I think, what I think that to put this in a, in a format that might be useful is that There are essentially three points. Uh, one is stormwater, the other is grade change relative to the approved subdivision. And the last is basement versus cellar in terms of whether or not the structure falls under the. The, or, or is above the square footage required. So I think that, um, Brian has addressed all of those and those are the three points this board would need to consider if we wanted to weigh in. At this point, I think it'd be useful if, um, if Brian Manta, Assistant Town Engineer could step in. And give us his, um. I assume you're here for this one, Brian.
I guess.
Yeah, so if you could, I, I think the stormwater thing is, is squarely in engineers', um, court. Engineering's court, so if you could give us engineering's view of that.
Um, yes, uh, with respect to this specific appeal, yeah, um, the engineering department does not have any comment on this appeal.
Okay. Um, well then, uh, I was hoping you'd give us all sorts of good analysis, but. Okay, that's okay, that's fine. So, um. But, um, how we decide, we can choose not to say anything. We can choose, um, to. Vote for favorable action in terms of this appeal, vote for unfavorable action. So we have three things we can do. So. How does the board want to, um, proceed here? Do we want to discuss these things one by one, or do we want to do a straw poll and see which way we're going already? Or how, how do you want to do it?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's a point of order.
Yes.
Uh, this is Jeff Roloff's attorney for Keith Goodwin. The petitioner. I just wanted to point out my perspective on, on your framing of the issues here. I, I.
Excuse me, sir. Um, this is right now a discussion amongst the board. So why don't we hear from the board whether they, and then we will open, if the board wants to hear from you, then we will do so. But let's, let's first see if the board has an opinion on how they want to proceed. This is not a public hearing. Um, that is the Z B A's, where, this is just a discussion within the board. So, um.
Deib, could you, um, reiterate your points again, please?
I, uh, there was a question of stormwater management, a question of grade change relative to the approved subdivision grade. And a question about whether or not the square footage of the structure exceeded the limit required for site plan review.
I'd like to add that, um, there's also a discussion here, which. It's possible that this has already been answered by legal, but my understanding was that. The trees along the boundary on the north side of the entire development. Twenty-five, I believe, was the number, were. Um, uh, claimed to be planned to be saved.
That is actually, that has been answered by legal.
Can you, can you remind me what?
I believe it, and I believe, I believe it was a question of whether what was on the subdivision plans. What the subdivision process actually is. And the subdivision process describes grades and it uses potential locations of structures and grades in order to. And both Brian's can tell me if I'm way off base here, to determine what the layout of the land is, but it does not actually. Mark where any structure will be. And if there was any, um. So the, the subdivision plots did not indicate, there was no agreement made as to whether. Something was to be saved or wasn't to be saved, and the memory of understanding that was written with the select board. Or I should say, whatever the document is called, did not lay those out either. And I believe legal has come in and said that subdivision, does this particular subdivision agreement did not put. Any sort of constraints on. What happened to the trees.
Hold on, hold on.
I need to follow up on that with, with Deib. So, but in addition to the trees, there was the question about the grading and the size of the buildings on the sites. And that even though I understand that I think the previous planning board vote or the legal vote was that. Subdivision plans that show grades and specific houses, home foot, how building footprints. Um, are not binding on subsequent development of each lots. The fact is, this is an environmentally sensitive site. And I understand that numerous representations were made. That this would be the grading and these would be the trees. And I believe that is the crux of the, um. Um, uh, protest or whatever the right word is, appeal, I guess. Is, is that, that what's been done to this site is not, the whole site. And including the, the lot number two is not what was agreed to between. The people who were representing the site at each time and what's going on now. And so it brings into question larger issues of the subdivision law, and I recognize that. And in the meantime, it does appear to show that what people said they were going to do, they're not doing. And the result of that is, is a tragically and a hundred percent denuded property. That's my point.
I, okay, um, I, I think that legal did speak to this when we went through the previous. Discussions we had about the variances that were requested. Brian, you wanted to make a point, please?
So there, there were site plans that showed certain trees that should be saved and not saved. It wasn't twenty-five trees along a specific. Back or, uh, back border. It was twenty-five trees total, I believe, on the site, and there were several trees that were supposed to remain that didn't. Um, but that, that, you know, the loss of two trees, which is essentially the quote mistake here, is not the reason for, for this appeal. Um, like you said, Deib, the, the reason for the appeal of those three, those three points basically. Requiring the need for site plan review, uh, for a number of different reasons.
I mean, I think, I thi- I'm, I'm certainly empathetic with the. The statements of the neighbors and we've all seen the site. It is really denuded and there's no doubt that. I don't think that the planning board at the time went through the subdivision process envisioned that, but. Legally, the problem is, is that I do not believe that we can. There was not, there were no. Legal constraints put in place which would have prevented all of what happened. And maybe that was a. Mistake. I don't know what could have been done. But right now what we're faced with is what we are legally obliged to uphold under subdivision regs. And, and the, but again, we are really only talking about a special permit here. And that is what this is for us. So it's, it's stormwater, great change, yeah.
Well, it's not, so there's the, what, what's before us at the moment is essentially, you know, and, and, uh, saying that the building inspector. Or the building commissioner acted inappropriately in issuing this building permit. That, that's where we are currently, at the end of this very, very, very long process. So where we are currently is that. The, uh, they're saying that the, this building permit should have never been awarded. Because it should have gone through site plan review. That is, that is the disque- that is, so we can choose to say. Yes, that should go through site plan review because X, Y, Z could happen. Or you can say, no, there's no reason to go through site plan review here because whatever, the subdivision process and variance process. Uh, I'm just trying to give you your options here in terms of what we're trying to decide in the next, you know, eight minutes.
Brian, you're saying that you don't agree with the, the five thousand square feet being calculated improperly?
I, I, I do not, uh, that is not how it's been calculated previously.
Okay.
That's, that's not how anyone has been, and, and we specifically said that if it's, if it's in the basement. Um, and during the discussions of when we were doing triggers for site plan review. It doesn't matter whether it's living space or not, and it specifically says that if it's below grade, we don't. It's not counted as part, as part of the, the overall square footage for the trigger for site plan review.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's very clear that the, the square footage has been calculated. The rules used to calculate the square footage were what was appropriate. So, um.
I'm sorry, Deib.
No, go ahead.
There is one point about drainage and perhaps that the calculations were. Um, then are not, uh, uh, appropriate for now. And that's completely out of our real house, I guess, right? Except for perhaps.
I, I can give, I can get a, a little bit of information about that. So in, in the planning board subdivision. Decision basically said that we approve the drainage, but if the footprints of the house change. Then the drainage still needs to, you know, accommodate for those, for those new footprints. Um, there were new footprints as part, you know, it, it was anticipated, the planning board anticipated. There to be larger footprints. That's why it was put into the decision. Um, and, you know, there, it could be a question for the assistant engineer, but, I mean, basically, it, we, the, the, the new, new plans were submitted. Um, and whether or not, um, uh, Brian, I don't know if you were the ones at the, at the one at the time to, to do that, to new, new calculation, but, um. You know, the question would be for them if you had, if you had questions about, about that, but. But the footprints changed just like we, or not just like we anticipated, but the, the decision anticipated that. Um, and they had to accommodate it for it.
We, we could, you know, we could recommend to the Z B A that they get a, another consultant to look at that, but that's not. You know, like you said, Yicheng, that's really not in our real house, cause. I was, I was hoping.
Out far, far is from, and how, how worth it it is to get a third party.
It's up to the G B A. That's their, it's their call on that, so. Um, the, the next thing is, is I think the trickiest one. And that's the one that this board has talked about in the past is, is if there's a grade change after an improved subdivision. Does that grade change? To the approved subdivision grade, does it go, need to go through site plan review? And, um, I know we've talked to. Legal about this, and I don't know that we achieved a lot of clarity on that. And so I would say that this is something for legal to come in and try to. Disentangle whether or not they are separate enough processes so that. They would require a site plan review with a grade change greater than six percent above the subdivision approved grade. We, we had a lot of, we talked about changing the language to accommodate that. We had a lot of discussions. I forget which. Generation of the planning board where we wondered about whether we needed to have a second bite at the apple, as it were, to ensure that. Developers didn't come in and do great changes. And I do not recall that we came to a conclusive. Decision as to what was possible within this existing bylaws. So. This is a question for legal. Sally, please.
So I would say that given the ambiguity of, um. Uh, any legal recommendations from town council. Um, and given the huge diversion between the. Uh, suggested footprints that were on all of the plans involved in the site, in the subdivision approval. And the size of the house that's being put on that site now. This is just on the basis of the fif- five thousand square foot question and whether we should go to site plan review. Um, I would say that this, the, the footprint of the house is significantly different. Um, it should be re-engineered in terms of runoff to, um, m- meet the needs of the site. A- as I said, especially where it's contiguous with an environmentally sensitive location. Um, and that, th- that the intention of site plan review. Being triggered by a, a house of a certain size. Um, should, the, the triggering calculation should be, um, exactly how. Uh, for instance, the owner of the house would describe it to somebody who would perhaps be buying it. They would say, well, we have X thousand square feet of living area in this house, and the intention according to the architectural plans is truly. To make a portion of what, um, is the portion of the house that's partly underground. To make that significantly usable living space. And in that regard. When you include that space, the house is well within the parameters of a house. That should go before site plan review, and it's certainly within the rights of the planning board. To ask for site plan review based on the amount of living area that's in this house, especially.
Total, I totally disagree.
We, we, we can't rewrite zoning says. The zoning has a definition. And that definition is, is very precise. So this, this, this planning board has no discretion. It's written, and we have, it's not actually written in terms of living area, and living area itself. Has an explicit definition. So none of these things are, we have no discretion in any of those. So we, we can't say anything about the size of the house relative to what was on the subdivision plans, because the subdivision plans have no place here. We can only talk about the plans that are before us. And they are of a certain size and they have, and there's a certain above and below grade on the basement, on the, the lowest story. And so we, we have zero discretion.
It excludes the basement. It's very clear.
Yes, it's very clear. It excludes the basement. If, if you feel that the, the, the definition of, of space is in, is, does not fit. What we want, then we have to rewrite the zoning bylaws, but in this case, we cannot do so. And so. If the. Building commissioner has properly classified it as a basement. And properly, then it is properly excluded. I mean, that's what it comes down to. Has the building commissioner properly classified this as a basement? And in Brian's opinion, he has. And therefore, from that follows that the square footage has been properly calculated. In, in terms of whether or not it requires site plan review.
If fifty, yeah, if fifty percent or more of the perimeter is below grade, then that's considered a basement. And that's, that is what is explicitly not, not included. So I didn't go out there and say that. You know, meaning that I'm not measuring there, saying that, that, that fifty percent. I'm just as- assuming that the voting inspector is saying that this is a basement. The app, the applicant is saying it's a basement also, and they're saying it should be counted. And I'm saying by the fact that they say it's a basement, it doesn't count. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Uh, that's my plain reading of the, of the thing is, it excludes basement, so.
Well, I think there's a lot of issues on the table at once, and, um, in, in every case, there appears to be. Um, a, a legal interpretation.
We, we have three issues here. We really only have three. We have an issue of stormwater, and the stormwater calculation is just. Um, that's not us, up to us to determine. If they are not, if they have to, if, if they are not following the regulations required for stormwater. That's a separate issue. Stormwater is not part of. A site plan review, as far as I know. I can't remember all the.
It is, it is, it is.
Okay, then I, then I misspoke, but. If they are not doing what's correct, then it's, there's nothing we can say about that. That's up to engineering to determine that, not us. And engineering has not come to a decision. Number two, grade change relative to approved subdivision grading. That's a legal question. We can't deal with that. Whether or not the calculation of the square footage required for. Um, site timer review, I, I think it's a very clear, very clear calculation which has been done. I don't think there's any ambiguity on that whatsoever. So, I, I don't know that there is. We have one thing that we can rule on, I think, with no ambiguity, and the other two are, one is in legal and one is in engineering.
So, Deib, does, does that mean that, you know, for those two that are, that are not. That we don't have clarity on yet, those two issues you described? I mean, does that mean? W- we need to wait to get more information to make this decision, or does that mean that ultimately this decision really doesn't fall under our purview?
I think it, it doesn't. And what we would say in our decision is that we can only comment on the one. Let's say that we decide that the, the square footage was properly corrected, and we would say that we do not, or we do feel like. This is a, whether in favor or disfavor on that one point. This is a, whether in favor or disfavor on that one point. But the other two, we'll simply say, we we cannot come to a conclusion, the Z B A needs to have this. With, I don't know when their hearing is, but we don't have to, because we're just an advisory board, we do not have to come to a full conclusion.
I would also like to add that I think there is a fourth issue on the list here, which is noncompliance with commitments made for the non. For the preservation of trees on the on the site. And um, I I know, I heard Brian say, well, it's only two trees. Um, I don't think that only is an appropriate word to talk about in the removal of trees. And if there were representations made, that specific trees would be saved and they were subsequently removed. That right there is, it's a significant data point in this conversation, and it would be number four on our list.
But Sally, does that actually trigger site review, or is that something that you wish would trigger?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Brian, could you bring up our list of what triggers site review, please?
Um, yeah, it 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 would not trigger, trigger site plan review, the and the point that I was trying to make is that this. This appeal is not about the loss of two trees, that is the only point I was trying to make related to the two trees. But um, I, in terms of site plan review. In terms of the triggers for site plan review, they're mostly almost all commercial in other districts, G B G B D two.
Point nine point six, the paragraph in in question, or are these not triggers, these are, these are standards?
Nine point five point one are the triggers, which was saying.
Can we pop those up, please?
Right, these are they.
So, the triggers for site plan review, this stuff related to the I L and the S C I district. Things in the G B, in the general business districts.
Uh, Brian, we're not seeing it unfortunately.
You're not seeing anything, all right, this happened to me the other day, uh, for some weird reason, it would stop.
Sally, Sally, whoever you're speaking with, could you tell them to please not join us in the conversation?
Yes, I shall, I've been, thank you.
That's.
Are you looking at a PDF right now, nine point five point one, or still nothing? Okay, this for some, this this happened halfway through a previous Zoom, so you're just gonna have to, believe me, I I tell you. Um, but I I'm just, I was not able to share my screen again halfway through. But it's new construction or expansion of of a building. That is greater than or equal to five thousand square feet, including garage and any floor area. It has nothing to do with trees for a triggering of cyclone review, it's it's basically new construction over a certain size. And then change in slope over six percent of an existing grade. So that's, that's what this is talking about, is both the change in slope and the the trigger for review based upon square footage.
And stormwater.
Sorry, and stormwater, that is stormwater, that's not a, it's not a trigger for review, but it is a a with a a. Um, a review standard, something that is reviewed, it's not.
Okay, so um. I don't know that we, I I mean, if the board wants to have further discussion, um, we may, I I think that. I think that. Emotion. We could, uh, we, a motion, we could take these one, two, three, and say whether or not we think that we are competent to discuss them or make a decision. Um, or we could have, there could be a motion saying that, um, you know, whatever motion. I can't, I can't do a motion until we rewrite these bizarre rules, so um. If someone wants to make a motion, or we can move not to do anything.
The 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 previous appeal of lot one was it was was take no action. Um, I'm not saying for the board to do that, um, that's not what I did. But but um, that is, that is just, that is what the previous board did, it was a three one vote. The entire board was receptive and sympathetic to the concerns of the neighbors on Dana Avenue. But a majority of the planning board reflecting on the complexity of the claims in the petition chose not, chose to not take any action. Uh, just putting that in, that is what the previous board did.
I I think if I may, Brian, just one more time, and then I'll shut up, I think that. This particular appeal, um, because it deals with a piece of the zoning bylaw. Which is near and dear to this board's hearts and its interests. That if we were to take no action on that one item, I think that would be really inappropriate. I think the board should make a decision whether or not the zoning bylaw should, that whether we support it or not.
I think I'd like to make a motion, Diab. And I, and and it may need some refinement, so bear with me with my run on sentence. But I would like to make a motion that the planning board vote for site plan review. Based on the complexity of the case and the considerable. Um, differences between what the subdivision approval was based on. Which is a foundational decision made in this property. Um, and um, what is being proposed for this particular site? And if that is not based on a particular trigger in section nine point five of our zoning bylaw. I don't wish that to be a reason for us not to consider site plan review. I'd like us to avail ourselves of the authority that we have. To understand and protect and and direct land use in our town. To avail ourselves of a particular mechanism in our zoning bylaws. And consider it, if it's not triggered by paragraphs, sub paragraphs one through seven of section nine point five point one. It could in in fact be triggered by our discretionary understanding of the complexity. And um, extremity of this case, so help help me make that.
I I I think. I I think that if legal are here, they would say that motion is out of order.
You're you're, you're saying to go outside of the zoning bylaw.
I'm saying for us to exercise our discretion as land.
Have, we have.
We have no discretion.
No, we we, this is the bylaw which was voted on by town meeting, it is the law of town, we cannot change it.
Yeah, I mean, it it's it's whether or not they've. I'll stop, nevermind.
I I I think the motion is out of order. There are specific guidelines written in the zoning bylaw as to when site review. Can be brought, can i is required. And we have to meet those conditions, if those conditions are not met, then site plan review cannot proceed. Because otherwise, there's no point in having those conditions.
Sorry, can I just ask one clarifying question?
Yeah.
Um, so I, as I understood, one of the conditions or one of the triggers is the the grade change. Um, you know, greater than a certain percentage or or amount. And can you just confirm, are we waiting for guidance from legal on whether or not that has? Because that seems like that's a black and white, a very binary trigger, either it's been triggered or it has not, like, has that been triggered? Or and are we still waiting for that guidance?
We have not, this is, I believe, we've only spoken about it in the hypothetical before. And this, I believe, is the first time that it has been presented to us. And I think legal is, legal has not been brought in on this, on this particular case. And so maybe this is the point where legal no longer has a hypothetical, and they will have to actually give us some guidance as to whether. Which has precedence, the subdivision regs or site plan review regs. But we don't have that guidance right now.
Do we have an engineer's analysis of the grade as it is exactly delivered? Right now to the builder on lot two, or yeah, I don't know if it's called lot two, two Abbey Road. And um, the proposed grade for the site. Um, once the house is completed, that's question number one that I have. And question number two that I have is, when we calculate the portion of the basement that's underneath. The ground, I believe the trigger is fifty percent for it to be counted as um. Uh, live, uh, as part of the square footage of the house. And can we have an engineer calculate that very precisely? So that we know whether the grade for the square footage of the basement. Um, is a portion of the basement that is below or above grade is above or below fifty percent. I need an engineer's ruling on both of those things in order to know whether site plan review is being triggered or not.
Well, the first, the answer to your first question is, we absolutely know what the grade in the subdivision was. And the developer has provided a grade change in their current plans, so those.
I don't mean was, I mean, what what's been, what was proposed in their plans and what is delivered now as a lot. Okay, so what's been delivered now as a lot is a particular grade of land. And I don't, and so are you propose, are you saying that based on what the land was before they created the subdivision?
No, I'm saying, you asked whether we know what the grade of the subdivision was, but the question is. Whether the. Grade, the additional grading relative to the subdivision is enough to call for a. I i is is. Whether that difference is important as to whether or not this goes through site plan review, right?
I would need a surveyor, I'd need a survey.
But it, but it's a, it's it's a, it's a legal question, if the grade of.
Based on data.
The data are there, I don't think anyone's disputing the grade, the two grade levels. Right, everyone agrees that the subdivision, the subdivision um call for a particular grade level. And that the developer wants to implement a different grade level, and that there is a difference between them. I don't think anyone is disputing that, and I don't think anyone has disputed the numbers.
Okay, so I'm I'm just confused, so is that undisputed change? Greater than six percent over five hundred square feet or more?
According to the, to the, to the um, the panelists, yes, but.
In fact, I'm not asking in 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 according to, I'm saying, do we have a survey? That would document yes or no as an independent analysis of.
Yeah, um, oh, so basically, if you wanna count from before the subdivision road was put in. From the beginning to now, yes, more than six percent has definitely occurred.
And if you count from the way it is right now today, which was the, which was the, what do you call that? In 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 subdivision land, you call that the delivered grading, or there's a word for it.
And you, well, I I don't know that you're you're asking for the difference between what was approved from the subdivision and what's here right now, correct?
Yes, that's helpful, thank you, that's what I am.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I don't know, I mean, the, um, I don't have that information in front of me in terms of exactly what the percentage changes.
How could we know if.
Grades from the subdivision.
Criteria number nine has been delivered, or been triggered or not, then.
But the point, the question before us is, even if that is over six to group percent. There's a legal question as to whether that grade change will trigger a site plan review. Because that grade was all, a part of that was was created by the subdivision regs. So that's the problem that this board doesn't have insight into. You can measure, you can measure the data, you can go and measure the grade and come up with the numbers. But we're still faced with this legal issue as to whether or not the site plan review is a separate, independent. Review that they aren't somehow linked, and that's the problem that we did not get resolution when we talked to legal before. And that's the problem for us tonight, if it, if legal says that these are separate. Reviews and they are independent, then then we can, then we can go forward and say yes. But if legal said, if legal hasn't said that they're independent, then we, then it doesn't matter what the measurements are, because.
Was the property delivered to the town graded to exactly what the subdivision grading? Said it would be delivered as, that's my first question.
I don't know, and I don't know that it's a, it, I don't know if it's, if it's a um requirement. I don't know which development, which developer is required to do that grading. So it could be that the grading is not done by the first developer, but it may be done by the second developer. I don't know legally who is who is responsible for the final grading.
Well, we have signed off on the development, we've given our blessing that the. What is the line, that the the legal agreement between the original developer and the town? Has been completed and executed and delivered, is that correct? They have all their. Now, or whatever it's called.
But if the subdivision were, Brian, perhaps you have more knowledge on this, let's take a hypothetical. Let's say that a subdivision plan was agreed upon. And that the land was then sold to another developer, completely unchanged. The subdivision plan still holds, correct, Brian, it transfers with the property?
Yes, and if you have specific questions for the current developer who has taken over the land since the previous developer, he is here if you wanna talk to him.
But I I don't know, well, we can certainly talk to him, I don't know that it will bring any. This is a question that we cannot answer, because we need legal's guidance.
So legal has definite.
I'm asking a very specific question here, Brian, I'm sorry, I'm asking, is there a difference between? Either A and what they're proposing, or B and what they're proposing, and in either case, are either of those. More than a five percent change, six percent change over more than five hundred square feet. And the A and the B are what was approved as delivered grade for the subdivision? To what they're proposing now, or B, what is actually there today? Which would have to be a survey done of the land compared to what they're proposing. And in either case, if there is a change of more than six percent over an area of five hundred square feet, which is pretty tiny. I would say this triggers site plan review.
There's no doubt A plus B equals more than six percent over five hundreds, or you know, six percent over more than, more than five hundred. A being the 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 first portion of the subdivision and B being what's ever been done since then, I don't think there's that, I I. I I think, of course.
I was saying, I was saying or, but whichever.
Well, I can firmly say A plus B.
Would trigger it.
Definitely.
We have one, is is uh, is Sally's motion still up or is it gone?
I I I think Sally's motion is out of order. Because, and so I I, you know, I don't know who gets to rule that, but my opinion is it's out of order. If there's a second on that motion, then someone can second it, or we can just move on to another motion.
Someone has to second it, if no one seconds it, then we move on.
Then we move on, I'm sorry, Brian, I'm I'm.
So, that's okay, so Diab's calling the second right now, if there, if there's no one, you know, just that.
If no one's gonna second it, then that, and you know.
And it's always, that motion is dead.
And that motion is dead, so.
I I believe that technically the motion is dead, and I can say that I withdraw my motion, I'd still like to make another motion then. That we take a vote as to whether site plan review is triggered by section nine point five. Paragraph, nine point five point one, paragraph seven, change in slope over six percent of existing grade. Of an area of more than five thousand square feet.
As, are you asking whether the site, that in this particular case, that the site plan review is triggered? Since simply, okay.
Making a motion that we approve, that we vote that site plan review is required based on. Section seven or paragraph seven of nine point five point one.
So ju- just to help you here a little bit, yeah, so then it was, what you're saying is favorable action with regard to the appeal. Because nine point five point, because because nine point five point one, number seven is triggered, that that would. That's what it sounds like you're saying.
Thank you, Brian, so moved.
Okay, do we have a second? I am not seeing any one seconding. So I'm gonna say that that motion also has not succeeded, or has, isn't moving forward. Is that, does anyone else wish to put forward a motion on this?
So from what I understand, we have three triggers. The first one is stormwater engineering. Uh, the second one is a grade change of more than six percent. And the third one is a calculation of the lower level, whether or not it's a basement or a cellar, and if it's included in, in that calculation.
So, so just to be clear, storm, stormwater is not a trigger for site plan review. That's actually before this town meeting coming up, uh, of a, a, um, a square footage increase would, would require. Um, not site plan review, but would, would, would require stormwater mitigation.
Okay, and from what I understand, we cannot. The site, the site sloping issue is under legal's purview right now, and we, we don't have. A way to sort of determine that. Uh, and the stormwater calculation is out, outside of our, uh, uh, understanding of the board, uh, uh, about engineering. Um, but the third one, the square footage calculation of the lower level, um, whether or not it's a basement, or it's, it, it's considered. Um, part of the calculation or not. Um, and what I understand is that it, uh. It, it's a, it's, we're counting, um, if it's. Less than fifty percent is underground, then it is considered. Not part of the calculation.
No, if more than, if, maybe you're saying the same thing, if more than fifty percent of the, of that floor is below grade, then that does not count. If it's a basement, it does not count.
Okay, so on, on that point, then. That calculation. Then would not trigger more than, it would not true, the, it would not make the building more than five thousand square feet, if we do not count it.
Right? Sorry, I don't know that more than, more or less than fifty percent of the basement is below ground. I don't know that. If you look at the drawings, it's a jagged diagonal line.
Yeah, so Brian, how do we know that? So what is?
That, that's based upon, so this is what the appeal is. I mean, the appeal is basically saying that, that the building in, uh, inspector. Uh, you know, is counting this as a, as a basement, but this should be really counted as, 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 as living space and therefore should be counted as site plan review. So. They're saying it's a basement, meaning the building department is saying it's a basement.
So any, so. Those, those, is there a dispute as to whether it is called a basement? Or is it simply a dispute as to whether or not that could be used as living area?
They're calling it living area and therefore it should be counted. I, I don't, I think it's more an attack on the zoning bylaw than it, than really kind of saying that, that. That the, the building department acted inappropriately. I, I don't, I don't really know.
I, my reading was that they felt that there was a, um, disconnect. Between the definition of. Square footage. And the trigger for site plan review. And that if you read into site plan review, the reason was to accommodate. Living area. And that by doing so, it was confused with the definition of square footage, which does not. Or something, I'm sorry, I think I got that backwards. The point that I took from this was that not that there was a. Disconnect as to whether it should technically be called a basement. But whether or not living area, that phrase living area was a consideration. In the trigger for site plan review. And my reading of. The trigger for site plan review is that it doesn't say, use the word living area. And it specifically excludes basements. So I don't think that basement, the question of whether it's a basement or not. I don't think is what's behind this. Now, if the board wishes there is a, you know.
It is, it is, I'm sorry, Diam, if, I thought that the zoning bylaw, Brian, help me here, is that if the. If, if an area of a house is below grade. By that floor of the house is more than fifty percent underground. I don't care what you call it. You can call it a cellar, you can call it a basement, you can call it a wine cellar. If it's, if, and it's being, it's being depicted in the plans as living area. Which is moot, frankly, because of the way our zoning is written, but if it is more than fifty percent. Below ground, it's not to be counted in the square footage of the house. And if it's, um, less than fifty percent below ground, it is to be counted in the square footage of the house. And I do believe, and this is, this is perhaps an ancillary observation, it's not relevant to the code. But I do believe that were this house built and re, and marketed, it would be marketed with that square footage included.
Yeah.
You across this question about the usage versus like the calculation of it in the past story.
Yeah, so.
Marketing versus like what, what the town counts.
Right, right. So that's why I said I'd much rather just find out exactly from somebody who can analyze drawings. In a three dimensional way, what portion of that floor is it over or under fifty percent? That will help us understand whether, um, the square footage provision, which I believe is paragraph five, is covered. Um, but we've already determined that paragraph seven, um, is triggered. I thought we determined that in our conversation earlier.
The, the, the square footage, if, if neither party disputes that it's called a basement.
It is, yeah, it's a basement, and therefore it's not, it's very clear that a basement, I, I think we need to move on.
Yeah, I, first off, it does matter whether you call it a basement or a cellar. Those are very specific definitions on zoning bylaws, so we have to be precise. I mean, I would, I would, I, I can't make a motion, I would, I would, I would encourage a motion.
So I, I make a motion, um, for unfavorable. Action because the planning board cannot. Rule on the, uh, the stormwater. Issue or the, uh, site slope issue. But we do, uh, uh, it would, it would not trigger the site plan review because. Uh, the square, the basement would not be counted in the square footage. Is that?
I think that, uh, yeah, we can.
Yeah, to recap, to recap, un, unfavorable. Because, or unfavorable with regards to not a purview for the stormwater port, uh, portion. And then, say it again for everybody, please.
The, uh, more than six percent, um.
The wall change is under legal.
It's because it's under legal.
And then the square foot, then, and then, and then the square footage would be, uh.
Whatever.
It would not count the lower le, the basement. So it would not be above five thousand square feet.
Can we, yeah, can we just, Brian, if we can pull out that particular. Um, condition in the, and just say that provision, whatever holds.
Number five.
Yeah, nine point, whatever it is.
Nine point, it's nine point five point one, number five.
Nine point five point one, number five. With regards to. calculation of. Square footage. Holds, and therefore this is not subject to site plan review. Okay, so let's, um. So we are, the motion is to, um. Unfavorable action. Due to one, stormwater is not under our purview. Whether the grade change is. Subject. To site plan. Review. After a subdivision approval. Is under. Legal. Under legal cloud, I would say, because we don't know. And three, that section nine five one, number five. With regards to calculating square footage. Holds. And indicates and, and concludes that this is not subject to site plan review.
So moved, yep. Cheryl gone?
No, I'm here. I'll second that.
Okay, um, we now have a motion we can vote on, um, so we'll do a roll call vote. Kurt spring.
Hi.
Um, Sally Dale.
No. Hi.
Hitchcock?
Hi.
So that is four, one, zero. Thank you very much. I think we will definitely be speaking with legal to understand, and I, I assume that the ZBA. Or also we're just speaking with legal to understand the, the boundaries of that. Okay, uh, thank you everyone for coming with us. Uh, what's next on our agenda, please, Brian? If you could flash the. Well, apparently you can't put it back up, but we'll see.
Yeah, I believe it was the website and management. What is this? The website and project management working group? And then updates and action items. Uh, we were to adjourn two minutes ago, but I don't think that's happening.
Right, um, oh, and then the, uh. Okay.
We- website and project managing, and then, um.
Right.
Updates and action items, but, but, um.
Well, we can, we can, the, the, so we, we, um. Just to, so we, we had talked about setting up working groups to look at various things. Um, the decision or the discussion with legal indicated that if the working groups were essentially, um. Reproducing what one person would do, i.e., we would be simply helping, and in this case. The website and the project management software would be things that Brian could do if there was a double. If there were another Brian sitting in the office, that there were a clone. So, um, the idea would be that we do need to redesign our website. And it would be good if the planning board actually took a look at it and, um, tried to figure out what we want. What we've got and how we get there. Um, so that would be the first group, and so that would be, uh, a couple of people who would be interested in doing that. The next one was, we had a discussion a few months ago about trying to use project management software. To, um, start tracking some of our long term goals and plans. So for instance, if we're going to be putting forward. Zoning bylaws for fall or spring or the next spring, that we would have a place where we would keep track of. The deadlines, um, what things we need to do, and, um. Essentially make sure that we arrive there when we need to. So those were the two, um, two groups that. Um, would, might be useful. If someone would like to work on the website, then, um, please step forward. This would not be actually creating the website. That's a separate issue. This would be. Looking at what we've got, looking what we want. And, and trying to come up with a plan, and then we would find some other resource for actually. Um, doing the, the work of. Bringing the current site to where it should be.
Um, I feel a little overwhelmed already, but of, of the two things, I think my brain works better on the first job, which is to think about the. Website.
Okay. Uh, so we have one volunteer and, um.
I'll work with Eching on that too.
Okay, so we have two volunteers, and I think that's, that's probably enough on that, and that would be working in, um. We're here with Brian, since you will be. You will be secondary Brian's, as it were. That's the way this works legally, and what that means is that if we do it this way, we, we don't have to do, um. Post meetings and stuff, because this is not a real policy decision stuff. Okay, the next one is to review project management software. And I know, uh, a couple of people have reached out to me in the past to discuss it, and I don't want to presume that they are still interested. So I will not put them on the spot.
So we, we might have to, I mean, I guess we, not necessarily waiting up, but I, there's talk of some type of, of software being used. Not so much at the town level, but, but potentially, so.
Okay.
I don't. I wish I had more information. I'm more of just coming in here to say something is happening, but I don't know what that something is. So look out for things and stuff like, you know.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we?
Yeah, I need to, I need to, um, get more information about that and give that.
So let's, let's, let's revisit this, um, while we have.
But we can at least start with some website, uh, brainstorming.
We can start with some website brainstorming, and for some reason Cheryl, I'm writing down everyone's last name but yours when I'm writing this list. I don't know why. Um, okay, so I think that's it. So action items, um, to wrap this up, action items are, um.
I, I'm reaching out to, uh, Imai Keller, Dennis Carlon, and Marissa Uteal. And then finding a fourth one, um, to reach out to, um, in order to potentially get someone, uh, at our meeting on the twenty sixth. See how that goes, or, but sorry, before the twenty sixth. To try to get, so, to try to get, uh, yeah, how we can work that out before the twenty sixth.
And keep this up to date when you, this, and then I will reach out to legal about this, um. About. Gradient, grading of land. I will reach out to legal, and I will see if they can come before us. Uh, they probably won't come before us anytime before the ZBA is going to be weighing in on this. But obviously, this is certainly something that we have. Interest in getting resolved, um, and we, we had a lot of discussion with this before, and it never was. So, okay, so that is, so that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, Brian, a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, do you know the date of the zoning, um, Board of Appeals? Um, on, on the question of Two Abbey Road?
Yeah, I do, uh, or I will in a matter of five seconds. It is October twenty first.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you.
So, um. Brief update that I want to talk about just in prep, I think it's on our agenda for next week. But I thought I'd give you an update because this came up late last week. Uh, so we have a, we have an article that's going before town meeting, setting up the master plan implementation committee. There was some concerns about some of the language that was brought up in a discussion. In reviewing all of the articles, there were concerns about, um. The timing of when the appointments would be made, and the impact that would have on the town clerk. Um, and also, uh, the, uh, financial responsibilities of the committee. Because they, if they are going to be applying for grants on their own, um, how would that financial and legal responsibility be managed? So I just, we will be, I think we have ten minutes or so in our next meeting to talk about this. So I will just say that I'm in discussions trying to get everyone's input. And, um, hopefully next week I will present you with, um, all the concerns and what are possible means. We can always, at this point, we would have to amend the motions. Which is, these should be small amendments, so that we can do easily on the floor. So it's not a big deal. Okay, um, so thank you for your patience, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent, uh, roll call vote, please, uh, Sally Dale.
You're muted, Sally.
Hi.
I hope you feel better, Sally. Hi.
Hi, oh, we shouldn't say hi. Oh, that's just horrible.
Past two hours, we've been doing it the whole time.
Yeah, I will say, yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you very much, uh, to WinCam, thank you to Nancy. Okay, our, um, recording secretary, thank you to everyone out there watching us, thank you to the board members. Uh, I'm sure there's someone else I should thank, um, but I. Uh, I'm sure there's someone else I should thank, um, but I can't think of them, so everyone have a great night, and we will see you in a week. Bye.